All right. It's the end. Would you like to call this meeting? The board. First, Lord Business, stand for the place.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, would you like to go first?
Is your microphone on?
Test, test, test.
There you go.
All right, there we go. Thank you.
Carmelo Oclendo, excused absence. Phil Lantry?
Present.
Russell Alexander?
Present.
Nanette Douglas?
Present.
Don Grisby?
Present.
Dacey Snyder?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum, and Ms. Snyder is a voting member this evening.
All right, thank you. Next order of business is approval of the minutes from the planning commission meeting held on September 17th. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Any questions, comments, everything good? Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 17th.
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next order of business is ordinance number 2024-62. Now, there's three here. I assume that we should read all these in together. Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. The cases before you tonight are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, not to end up, I apologize. If all three cases are going to be presented, I know the board will take, or the commission will take each of these separately at the time of deliberation and recommendation, but if the, all cases are being presented simultaneously, then they should be all read into the record as called at this time.
Agreed. All right, so we are going to be discussing ordinance number 2024-62 for the long residence, which for the annexation is ANX 23-00006. Ordinance number 2024-77 for the comprehensive planning amendment, CPA 23-00013, and ordinance number 2024-63 for the zoning map amendment, ZMA 23-00012.
Thank you. So the cases before you are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for the project called Long Residence. This request meets both the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County. It is a contiguous and reasonably compact property. The existing county future land use is low-density residential, and it has an AC and R1M county zoning designation. The requested city land use, it's low-density residential, and the requesting zoning designation is for agriculture. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impact on city The subject parcel is generally located north of Nova Road. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the current counties and cities, future land use and zoning districts for context. On or before August 14th, 2024, staff recommended approval of this request. Likewise, at this time, the request from the planning commission is for the approval of ordinance number 2024-62 for the annexation of Long Residence, ordinance 2024-63 for the zoning map amendment for Long Residence, and ordinance 2024-77 for the future land use comprehensive plan amendment for Long Residence. At this time, staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the city staff?
The property owners here?
Hello, sir, would you like to come up and explain your case?
Sure. Excuse me. My name is James Long. I live at 5645 Nova Road. We are a enclave of three properties there since the property behind us was developed, which was previously an orange grove. I'm not sure why we didn't get annexed at the time, that property, but we decided, my wife and I, to voluntarily annex, hoping that we could kind of have a little say of what future zonings and things happen there. So it's a straightforward, where we own 17 acres there. We are agriculture, we're trying to stay agriculture in that area, we're trying to keep a little section of Nova Road not overdeveloped. I don't know how long that lasts, but that is kind of our, our thought process for that property.
Okay, that sounds pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions?
Just checking understanding, it's currently zoned as low-density residential?
No, it's currently zoned agriculture. Future zoning is low-density housing. I, a lot of that has changed, not to convolute it, we just said we will do like-for-like. I don't know if in future years down the road, if that's going to be appropriate, because across the street has now become I-1 when it was annexed into the city. So, but, but for current use, our intent is to keep it agriculture.
So that's the zoning change, right? So if I'm thinking, it's the zoning map that it would go from single-family residential to agriculture?
No, it is.
Another way, right?
No, it's currently agriculture.
Right, because we're asking the zoning map amendment, AC agriculture to A agriculture, city agriculture.
Yes, yeah, from county agriculture to city agriculture.
That's, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, the future land use would be residential.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we thank you for explaining that.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, at this time, we'll open up public comment. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak on any of these three ordinances? No one? Okay, at this time, we will close public comment. Any other questions or comments amongst the commission members?
Just admirable.
All right.
Keeping agriculture.
So to have a motion for ordinance number 2024-62.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-62 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Five to zero. Ordinance number 2024-77.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-77 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five to one, five to zero. And then ordinance number 2024-63.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-63 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, five, zero. All right, next order of business, Eastside Park Property. This is an annexation, number ANX 24-00001.
Good evening, Commissioners. The case before you tonight is for also the voluntary annexation for the project known as Eastside Park Property. This request meets both the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning area agreement with Osceola County, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing county future land use is low-density residential with an agricultural county zoning designation. The applicant has the option to annex into the city without assigning a zoning district and future land use designation for the period of up to a year. The subject parcel is generally located north of 10th Street and south of Lake Ronnie On or before August 18th, 2024, staff recommended approval of ordinance 2024-64. Likewise, the request to the planning commission is to also recommend approval of ordinance 2024-64 for the annexation of the project known as Eastside Park Property. At this time, staff and, I'm not sure if the applicant came in, they said they were going to attend, but we're open for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the staff?
Yes. But what's the current land use?
This is only an annexation case tonight. This is a voluntary annexation. There is no land use or zoning issue at this time. I think staff mentioned that the applicant has up to a year to, to make a determination application for such.
So the county doesn't have any kind of use for it currently?
The owner is requesting to annex voluntarily for Florida, following Florida statutes and meeting Florida statutes requirement at this time. Our code provides up to a year for a person who decides to annex voluntarily to take the process of requesting a zoning designation and future land use change.
Maybe his question is, if you know the land use, the county designation.
At the county right now, the existing county future land use, like mentioned, is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is agricultural.
But again, members, this is just an annexation request this evening.
And does the annexation have to happen before they can actually do any of the other work and planning, et cetera?
Under the city code, yes.
All right, so they have to be annexed in before they can actually start all the rest of the other work with you?
If they're going to develop, they can develop under the county where they are, where they, the jurisdiction they pertain now, but if they annex into the city, then that would be part of the process pending proposals for development.
If they annex into the city. They could stay county and still develop it the way they want and go through the county's way, but what they really want to do is come into the city and annex the way the city wants them to.
Correct.
This is a voluntary annexation application. It's voluntary, yes.
Yeah, I just, they're not here. I don't know why we should let them annex into the city.
I have a quick question. In this enclave here, there's another piece of property that's not included. I assume that's a different property owner? Oh, that's a pond, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
That's probably for that adjacent development there.
Property to the west is a wetland, and property to the, is fully developed subdivision.
So now, why wouldn't the wetland be annexed as well? Is that?
It belongs to somebody else.
Okay.
They would need to acquire it and make their request themselves if they so wish.
Annex what they own.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Fair enough. I was just wondering, there was part of that enclave there.
It's a cutting-edge leland.
Yeah, on my expertise, I need that one to check. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Councilwoman Dagmar Isagara, Deputy Director. Just a point of clarification, the property cannot be developed in the county. It has to be developed in the city, and that's why the annexation. The property right now is contiguous, and per the JPA agreement, the joint planning agreement, they have to, the county has to inform us that there's an intent for development, and that's when we tell them, okay, you need to annex. But at this time, all we're doing is the annexation. The applicant has not provided any paperwork or intent of development with the city at this time.
Okay, and if they annex in voluntarily, do they, does that immediately begin any kind of payment to the city for anything there, or if it's not developed, there's really no cost?
Correct. Right, like, right now, it's like to like, it goes, the only difference is now it's going to be included in the city's jurisdiction, which means that moving forward, that property will pay taxes to the city.
Will pay taxes to the city.
Correct. As it stands today.
As, as soon as it's annexed in, it's, they start paying taxes to the city?
Well, technically, in the next pay, pay tax.
Taxes, right, yes, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And you said the applicant's not here, right? Oh, you are? Would you like to speak? No, I was the applicant.
I don't think that's the applicant. I think that's somebody who wants to speak on behalf of it.
I'm sorry, are you public wanting to make comment, or are you the applicant?
I'm actually the civil engineer.
Oh, okay.
And it, and it's listed as Luxar Development as the applicant, but.
Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Bruce Taylor, B. Taylor &amp; Associates, 131 East St. Cloud.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, to clarify things, this project is being submitted as a PUD and a land use change to medium-density residential. So we submitted this at the beginning of the year, we revised the layout, the annexation has moved forward, we've made some changes, but we have resubmitted the PUD and the, and the land use change to medium-density residential. However, I know that the city is going through a joint planning agreement, and this part, this property is part of that for the medium-density overlay. So that process, I guess, is going to be heard in the beginning of the new year, but we've already resubmitted our PUD package with the new layout, but this annexation is moving forward on its own path. So that kind of clears up where we're at with the project.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments before I open public comment? All right, at this time, we will open public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about this? All right, we will close public comment. Any other discussion? All right, pretty straightforward, it's just a simple annexation. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-64 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
We have two votes of nay?
Yep, I have two and two, I believe.
No, sorry. I, I approve the motion.
The motion was for, in favor of the annexation.
Correct.
Who, who voted aye?
In favor?
In favor.
The motion was four.
All right, so it's four to one.
Four to one.
It passes.
This is a good segue for me, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
Just a reminder for the commission, and for those in attendance here this evening. The planning commission is an advisory commission, and so the actions that are taking place here tonight are recommendations to the city council. These matters are going to be brought to the city council. I don't have the date, staff, I'm sure does, in, in December, December 12th, okay, and starting at 6:30 in the evening. So the council will take action on the matters that are on tonight's agenda. This is the recommendation stage from the advisory commission. Okay, thank you all. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, so that one passed four to one. Next is ordinance number, and I'm going to read all these together, because we have Palm Properties, we have an annexation, comprehensive planning amendment, and zoning map amendment. All right, so Palm Properties, ordinance number 2024-71, it's an annexation, ANX 24-00007. Also, ordinance number 2024-72 for Palm Properties, CPA 24-00010, and ordinance number 2024-73, ZMA 24-00009.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development.
Good evening.
The cases before you tonight are for annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a zoning map amendment for a project known as Palm Properties. This request meets both the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing future land use is low-density residential with a agricultural zoning in, in the county. The requested city land use is low-density residential, and they are requesting a zoning of agricultural. The request is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts on city facilities. The, the subject property is generally located east of Narcoose Road, north of East Earl Bronson Memorial, south of Lilian Lee Road, and west of Puffin Road. Here are graphic representations of the future land use map showing the low-density residential, as well as the zoning map showing the agriculture. On or before October 25th, 2024, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, this request to the planning commission also recommends approval of ordinance number 2024-71, 2024-72, and 2024-73 for, for the annexation, land use, and zoning map amendments for the project known as Palm Properties. At this time, staff are available for questions. I don't believe the applicant is here.
All right, thank you very much. Any, any of the commission members have any questions for the city?
I guess, similar to the first one, I just need to clarify in my mind in terms of what it's zoned as for, I know it's with the county right now, to what it would be once it becomes annexed in.
So with the county right now, it's zoned as agricultural, and it will be annexed in as agricultural city.
So why, why does this applicant want to annex in?
This applicant in particular, they did another annexation of a property they own right down the road, Danham Properties, and they would like to bring this as, as well into the city.
Yes, I recall that. Okay, any other questions? All right, this time, we'll open up public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? All right, we have no public comment, so we will close public comment at this time. Any other discussion, planning commission? All right. Anyone would like to make a motion? First on ordinance number 2024-71.
Well, I'm happy to do it. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2020, wait, let me make sure I'm right, 2024-71, or based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
All right, thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would also like to make a motion, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I only heard four.
No.
Okay, so we have four to one, motion passes.
Recommend approval, four to one passes with Mr. Alexander voting aye.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, second one is ordinance number 2024-72. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-72 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right, motion passes, four to one. Ordinance number 2024-73. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-73 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I think that one passed five to one, or five to zero, right? All right, that one passes five to zero.
Okay.
All right, next is ordinance number, it looks like we also have three with this one, so I'll read them all together. This is for Toho Marine. We have ordinance number 2024-74, the annexation is ANX 23-00010. We also have ordinance number 2024-75 for the comprehensive planning amendment, CPA And then the last one is ordinance number 2024-76, and as for the zoning map amendment, ZMA 23-00018.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a zoning map amendment for a project known as Toho Mar, Toho Marine. This request meets both, both statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing county future land use designation is low-density residential, and has an existing county zoning of, of agricultural. The requested city land use is, is commercial. They are requesting a zoning designation of HB highway business. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. The property is generally located north of Friars Cove, east of Glinda Court, and southwest of Canoe Creek Road. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the county's low-density residential land use and the agricultural zoning district. On or before October 25th to 2024, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, this request to the planning commission also recommends approval of ordinance number 2024-74, 2024-75, 2024-76 for the annexation, land use, and zoning map amendment of the project known as Toho Marine. At this time, the staff is available for questions. I do not believe the applicant is present today.
Thank you. All right, I just have a couple of questions. Yeah, and I see that it, the areas around it are already highway business and commercial, but that's, they're both county, right? This, or are they city now? That was the only thing I was a little confused on.
And I'm sorry, can I also get clarification on what is highway business?
So highway business is our commercial zoning. So for example, most of 192 that stretch is a highway business zoning. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Lantry, can you repeat your question?
So my question is, the properties to the west and east, are those still county?
No, those, I believe, are ours. Those are city properties. So by requesting the future land use of commercial and the zoning of highway business, it would be consistent with the surrounding area.
I see, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was the case, that I understood it correctly. So this is essentially almost an enclave, right? It's got some, it looks like the area to the south is still county.
Yeah.
Is that business, is it already there? Aren't they there in that area somewhere?
Yeah, there's already a business there.
It's already Toho Marine there, right?
But can you go back to the, the satellite view?
So there's businesses over to the northwest?
To the north.
Or northeast? But there's just that one solo.
So this is the adjacent property there. The only thing there is now, right now, is a home.
I thought they had a location right there around.
They do, it's to the left.
That's their same spot, right?
The left top of the screen. That's the actual Toho Marine building there with, you can see all the boats and whatnot in a lot there. Any other questions? Any other questions for staff? All right, excellent. At this time, we will open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this, on either of these ordinances? Okay, nobody in the audience, so we'll close public comment at this time. Any other questions or discussion?
What are they gonna do with it?
I believe the plan is for, is to provide boat storage.
I was hoping they'd do store something out there for those forks.
I know, for real.
I'm sorry, but this time we do not have a site plan.
Yeah, I figured that, I didn't see it in the.
That's all right, just curious, all right.
Wouldn't be much of a site plan to store boats, probably.
Just seems like a waste of that nice frontage on a road that's gonna keep growing.
Yeah.
I don't know, have you seen how much it is to rent or to rent space for your boat? It's pretty lucrative.
Yeah.
Wish I owned it. All right, no other comments or discussion? Okay. So first, we'll start with ordinance number 2024-74. Do I have a motion to recommend approval?
Or just a motion?
Or just a motion to recommend either approval or.
I'm gonna try it.
Go for it.
Go for it.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-74 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes five zero. Next one is ordinance number 2024-75. Do I have a motion?
All right, I'll go for it.
All right, go for it.
I I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number 2024-75 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And then the last one, ordinance number 2024-76. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2024-76 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. All right. Next is Tracy Manor. So we have a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. So I will read them together. The first one is 2024-80 for Tracy Manor, and the comprehensive plan amendment number is CPA 24-00002. And the second one is 2024-81. And the zoning map amendment is CMA 24-00002 for Tracy Manor.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The cases before you tonight is for a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment for the project known as Tracy Manor. The existing future land use is low density residential with a R1A single-family dwelling zoning designation. The requested city land use is medium density residential with a requested zoning designation of R4 multi-family dwelling. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. The property is generally located. The property is generally located east of Orange Ave, north of East 19th Street, south of East 17th Street, and west of Crawford Ave. Here are graphic representations showing the future land use and zoning maps depicting the low density residential land use and the R1A zoning designation. Honored before October 25th, 2024, staff reviewed this and recommends approval. Likewise, it is requested that Planning Commission also recommends approval of ordinance number 2024-80 and 2024-81, land use and zoning map amendments for the project known as Tracy Manor. Staff is available for questions. I do not believe the applicant is present.
Okay, sir, would you like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Danny Bumpus, I'm the architect for the Council on Aging. Just to give a little more background, there's seven duplexes on the site right now, 14 units. It's housing for low-income seniors, and the council was to build 24 more units if possible for the same reason, low-income housing for seniors. And I appreciate the staff recommendation, and I can answer any other questions if you need to.
Yes, you triggered an immediate question. I I did see that there were existing structures there, and they didn't seem all that old either. So is the intent to 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 add to those, or to take those out and replace, or or what exactly?
No, they would remain. I think they've been there a while, because it's, I mean, it's a multifamily project already, but I think the zoning, I think they were built before the zoning was put in place.
Those units have been there for a while.
They've been there for quite a while.
Picture of that, of, do you mind?
The satellite view.
Yeah, thanks.
Up to the.
So there's seven units there, and, well, I mean, there's seven buildings, I think there's.
Seven duplexes.
Okay, so there's two units in each.
Yes.
Building, okay.
Yes. And they would remain. We wouldn't do anything to those.
So I mean, there's not a lot of space here, it seems like, because of the, I mean, I know you have the area to the to the west there.
A lot of that is wetlands.
Wetlands, yeah, so.
There's not a lot of room. There's a room for a two-story building with up to 12 units per floor is what they're, what they'd like to do.
With an elevator?
Yes.
Seniors, aging population.
I just put one in my house.
But you don't have any preliminary master plan yet, or anything like that, right?
I had.
This seems a little tight to fit that in there.
It is. Can you put that on the thing or not?
So the Council on Aging owns this property?
They do, yes. And they've got two other properties in in St. Cloud. St. Cloud Villas 1 and 2, and several in Kastenmi, and we're, we're, we're almost closing on another project we had for 62 units in the BPL area.
So you can't do anything with the wetlands then, right?
No. I mean, you could for a lot of money, but no. No.
Literally.
Yeah. So you, it's a little bit. So you can see the seven buildings that are existing, and that's existing parking for them. We would build a two-story building to the left facing the wetlands, and you can see the wetlands delineation in the 25-foot setback.
So 12 per floor, two floors?
Yes.
I don't see any setback on the south end of the property, or is that?
Those are, that's another property.
No, that's a bad drawing.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering.
Yeah, well, I live right, I live up on Orange right now.
I mean, you know, sometimes you can get a variance to get closer to the lot line, but that's a little close.
And we may not end up with 24, but that's the goal.
So we're only talking about zoning from single family to get you a multiple, multi-family.
Yeah.
So there's, are there age limits and restrictions, because it mentioned that most of the folks would not be driving?
Most of them don't drive. I really don't know how they qualify the folks. I know there's a waiting list, but it's.
So how do they, how do they get transportation to where they're going?
The council has vans, and and they'll, they'll take services to this site also.
And could the staff confirm that the neighboring homes received notice? Okay. Thank you, sir. I don't know if we have any other questions, any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time I'd like to open public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? No? Okay, we will close public comment. Any other discussion?
There's just such a great need for senior housing in St. Cloud, so that's my opinion.
I agree. I don't see anything really too bad about this. I mean, seems pretty straightforward. I don't think they'll be able to fit the building as shown on the property, but.
Keep the faith.
But yeah, it's good, good to have more housing for our seniors. All right, so then we'll start with ordinance number 2024-80. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-80 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next one is ordinance number 2024-81. Do I have a motion for that?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-81 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes five zero. All right, and then next order of business is our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for December 17th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Any other discussion?
Just a reminder that you can bring your Christmas presents to me on that day.
Well, thank you for letting us know that. I appreciate that. Okay, well, then, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Are you about to close? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we got a question about my brother's house changing someone here on Pennsylvania from residential.
Sir, the the commission's only addressing the things that were on the agenda for this evening. The commission's not here to answer questions.
Where do we go to get these answers?
You can speak with, you can speak with the staff, and they can direct you, sir. Appreciate your comments. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go right there.
No, that's okay. So yeah, the staff should be able to help you out there, sir. All right, so I think I had a motion, I think I had a second as well. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, y'all.
Happy Thanksgiving.